Okay, we need a motion, the second. A session on student discipline hearing.
I move.
Second. Martin, second. Any discussion, calls on session number? Okay, at this time, the board will go into executive session on student discipline. The call is being ordered. Now we take a break.
............................................................ Okay.
We're going to skip over, but we need to approve the minutes. Do we hear that?
Yeah, we need to approve the minutes. Yes, you're right.
So, have a motion?
I move.
Martin?
My second.
Smith? Any discussion about them? How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, we'll skip over to the minutes. Please, about them. You'll have a motion?
I move.
Smith?
Second.
Priestley? Any of them? Any discussion?
I would like to go into executive session, if you would please.
That's all right. It's excellent.
I move the motion for an executive session concerning parcels of property for Hart's pre-K 8.
Do I have a second?
Second.
How do you vote? Yeah, just go ahead and start with the lady.
Okay. Item A, to approve payment of an additional $85,000 for a total of $125,000 to Mohammed Ranavaya for the final parcel of property for Hart's pre-K 8. Item B, a consultant agreement with Developing Minds Incorporated to provide teacher staff development October the 30th, 2012, according to the terms of the agreement. This will be paid for from Title VI Professional Development Funds.
Do you want to wait until the end or just talk about each item as we go?
We got a question.
Yeah, I do. On the consultative agreement, contract on the yellow sheet on Lincoln side of the book, the rate is $6,060. I know I had called and expressed a concern about this and someone was, I think Mr. Minkin or Charming or someone was going to talk to us about this. What does all of that entail? That's one day of professional development. And it's on October the 30th, so could you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, you know, our principal attended the effective schools conference in Arizona back in the winter. And this lady spoke while they were there. And I guess she's, you know, dynamic, national presenter of these research-based instructional strategies which tie into what we've been doing with our learning focus implementation and the IPI, the instructional practices inventory, the walkthroughs that we do. And, you know, principals requested that we, if we could work it out and make it happen, they would like to have her here to talk to the teachers per day.
I just wonder about the follow-up. If an act of this happens, then can we rely on the principals or someone to ascertain whether these strategies are being implemented?
Yes, and we'll make sure even with our district walkthroughs.
Okay, so it could be added to the walkthroughs or something? Because I think it's about the use of worksheets.
Right.
Right, I mean, this particular session. So, I mean, I'm concerned that we have some follow-up. $6,000 is a lot of money to pay in one day.
Mr. Minkin, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Mr. Minkin, what will the teachers receive in addition just to the lecture? $6,000 is a lot of money.
I believe it receives the materials that they can actually take back in terms of handouts that they can use in their classrooms immediately as a result of one day professional development session. I did a little bit of research on, Mr. King's here, and he could probably, I'll answer the question, you're right.
Yeah, I'm kind of chomping at the bit, jumping in there a little bit. That's all right, put me right on the spot. I was there.
Yeah, and also the travel, and that $6,000, that includes travel expenses and everything, you know.
And it is for all teachers, every instructional aid, if we need ever.
Yes, I've heard the principals that received that said it was awesome and that it would be really beneficial.
The actual premise of Marcia's presentation is to get away from the use of, the overuse of worksheets. And it does align with what we've done in Lincoln County and specifically in the last couple of years with our emphasis on IPI, which is student engagement. And she is very, very much aware of the importance of student engagement and will take us through all professionals and any other service personnel and take us through and show us actual strategies. And she has books on each subject area that deals with what she calls DIBRIS. So she, and what she does is through a very interactive session, she has, she models what you can use in your classroom. So she has you up and moving and everything that we're looking at and where the State Department is headed with student movement and some of the things that Dr. Marple has been presenting with our future initiatives is, she is right in line with that. So I think that it would be who us to take advantage of this latest happens.
All right, any questions?
That answers my questions. Because it's not on here. There's no way I could read that and get all that information, so thank you.
Is that for one school or?
It's for the whole county.
Whole county. All teachers?
Yes, yes.
I think the contract says 300.
Would you like to listen to this?
Yeah.
I would also like to add that not only does she have things for teachers about how to work with their children with DIBRIS, but also with parents. And she also has a book for leaders on how to make sure that leaders are making sure that these kinds of activities are happening. I have 10 copies of that book presently and would be glad to make that available for anybody who would like to do some reading.
Could we sit in on that session if we choose?
Sure.
Yes, it would be great.
She would jump the effort or she would applaud the effort of a local board trying to get involved with what she does. I'm unsure if she would embrace that.
Okay, Trish?
Okay, I would like to have item D pulled from the agenda. Also, item E to be pulled from the agenda. Item F, additional employment days for the following personnel during the month of June, paid from county funds. Mr. Sacks, principal at Lincoln County High School, 10 additional days. Katrina Moore, Hamlin Pre-K 8 secretary, two additional days. If you remember, Mr. Sacks started after the school year began and that also occurred previously with Mr. Linville and we had given them days because the person prior to had used up those extra days. And in order to be able to close out the year and get everything in place, he would not have enough days.
So Mr. Linville was a necessary part of the case?
He did, yes.
So this does not go beyond regular employment time for him?
Not for.
I mean, in a regular employment time for a principal, this just finishes.
Mr. Sacks.
Mr. Sacks, yes.
And Mrs. Moore and Hamlin, the secretary, this is in order to close out the school year with all of the finances. Item G, an out-of-state trip for Lincoln County High School seniors to Kings Island on May the 17th, 2012, transported by school bus and other expenses paid by the students. Item H, an out-of-state trip for Lincoln County High School students to Kings Island on May the 18th, transported by school bus and other expenses will be paid by students.
And this is, you follow what I'm saying, and this is a math-science day? These are math-science days that came out?
Item I, an out-of-state state trip for Hamlin Pre-K 8 students to Kings Island on May the 25th, transported by school bus and other expenses paid by students. The activities, the levy activities and fundraising will be part of those expenses that are being paid. Of course, the out-of-state travel for the following employees. That ends the spree, Mr. Plumbling, Mr. Corbin, Mrs. Plumbling to Cincinnati, Ohio on May the 17th to chaperone the students to Kings Island, that was math-science day. Ms. Turley, Ms. Baker, Mr. Riazzi, Mr. Ice to Cincinnati, Ohio on May the 18th, 2012, to chaperone students to Kings Island for math-science day. Mrs. Browning to Cumberland, Ohio to chaperone students, give students on a field trip to the wilds. That did occur, she just had not got this on the agenda prior to this expenses were paid by the group. Mr. McLeod to Cincinnati, Ohio in Newport, Kentucky to chaperone his students to the aquarium and Freedom Center on May the 31st, 2012, and the expenses are being paid by the group. Gina Fraley to Orlando, Florida to attend the National Restaurant Association Summer Institute, June the 24th through July the 1st, 2012. Those expenses are being paid by the West Virginia Heat Grant in county funds. There is a grant that does pay and this is required for her certification.
Who is this person?
She, Pro-Start teacher.
The Pro-Start, okay.
Pro-Start teacher at Lincoln County High School. Kay, a professional service agreement with Pipestone Conference Center to provide lodging, dining and meeting room space, June 17th through the 22nd for 2012 for Hart's pre-K 8 according to the terms of the agreement. This is a retreat for the school and it's paid through Title I Professional Development.
How much is it? And the sources, once again, what?
Title I Professional Development. This is for all the staff.
No, no.
Item L, an out-of-state trip for Guyanese school students to Kings Island on May the 18th, 2012, transported by school bus and expenses paid by the group.
Item C, I didn't.
Yeah, I'm going to ask the question that I'm set, maybe just sort of skipped it.
Oh, I have some hot topics. Approval for the Wiggly County Baptist Association to use the Hart's Pre-K facility as housing space for mission volunteers, July the 7th through the 13th, 2012, according to the terms contained in a letter dated April the 12th, 2012. I think you have the letter. This is an organization that has been coming to this area for many years.
I have a question in the fourth paragraph of the letter. It says, "We will also give a gratuity to the custodians for that week." Now, does that mean they're going to give our custodians a tip and we're already paying the custodians or are they going to pay the custodians?
That has occurred previously.
I don't ever know that they've ever offered a gratuity to custodians. A gratuity to me means a tip.
But are our custodians already working?
Well, some of them work 200.
26 days.
26 days.
There will be custodians there.
To July the 13th, you think there'll be custodians?
That will be in addition to their regular pay and we'll still, we will still pay them, but if they want to give them a tip, you know, for doing extra, which they will be doing extra.
Are custodians be doing their regular work and helping them? Is that right?
They'll have to clean up after them and things like that.
Now, as far as their work hours, do they still want to be bound by their normal eight-hour work day?
Their custodians, yes.
Yeah, they don't change their hours. Our experience with this group and the group that comes to Hamlin every summer is they clean up after themselves.
Well, I'm just concerned if they work more than eight hours and we didn't incur any overtime fees.
Well, it would have to be approved here beginning with.
Sometimes they do it and come later on.
Well, Mr. Priestley.
We did last year. And they also paid the estimated cost of retail cost for that week.
Like those groups, give a check. The county. You've worked with the other group.
Any other questions, the members, please? I'll ask for a vote.
Yes.
Get it. Now, any one sign, Amber?
No.
Okay. Presentation, Dr. Keith Smith.
See you all this evening. I was waiting down the other end. Didn't see you coming back. I should have known.
Side door.
As long as I'm here, many times. Spend a lot of time here like you got it. My name's Keith Smith and I was the director of the Colefield Rural Systemic Initiative, National Science Foundation, excuse me, National Science Foundation project. And Lincoln County was a participant in that. In fact, Jeff was our county contact at one time. This project came about primarily because in southern Colefield part of West Virginia and southwest Virginia area, we're experiencing some problems because a lot of the people, we had a lot of math and science people in this area at one time and they were all retiring about the same time. And so concern was raised that they didn't really have leadership, people coming in with leadership with the skills in math and science to help improve the programs. And so we got a grant, National Science Foundation grant, after we studied this a little bit. And we set about process of developing teacher leaders. Teachers who are in the school, who work full-time and we gave training afternoons or evenings and summer, we had a week-long training session and we worked through a lot of skills with these folks. And you had two of the best of the people that we worked with very seriously. We had a lot of good people throughout it. And this is just kind of a carryover. I was supposed to have made this award a long time ago. I had a death in the family, was not able to get to the meeting, that was the last time the people were together. So I've been kind of going place to place to catch up with it. But I just wanted to recognize these folks and for you to know, you know, what this was about. And incidentally, I've noticed and maybe some of you have picked up on this, there's now a lot of work going on in this thing called teacher leadership and particularly in rural counties because it's something, because of the limited number of people you have to do the job and the fact that there are a lot of jobs to be done. And let me dig one of these. You're the beneficiary of something that we purchased a long time ago and we have some from last. Oh, one short. Sorry. We got it. And I'll just, if you'll open that look in there, there's a brief description of the project and I want you to read that now. I want you to go to the second page. Do you want to go to the second page?
I'll read, I'll per.
Oh, I've got additional copy. I put these things together myself. I'm losing my mind. But that's a list of jobs. They're in every county. Doesn't make any difference, you've got 20,000 kids, you've got 2,000 kids. Those jobs have to be done in county. And what we found in the counties where we're losing people was that we're losing people that had content knowledge in math and science. And so it was difficult to replace those. And it was difficult to go out and hire somebody that was a math or science person to work full-time. So this teacher leader thing with training the folks gave us some capacity to provide people with skills, knowledge of how to do some of that leadership stuff. And so your two, excuse me, your two folks are here and I just wanted to bring them up and recognize them. I did learn one thing, certainly. Learned a lot of things. For one, that you can train people and give them the skills, but somebody's got to give them permission when they go back home to do that, to do the leadership and time to do it. It does take some time. We paid these folks $3,000 a year to go through this training and everything. And I think we got, I think you all certainly got a good production out of it. So I'd like to call Darlene, tack it up. Thing I want to say, you know, Darlene's math teacher and she worked with the project the whole time. She was the first, this was the first county to do what we call the program improvement review, where we brought people in, they looked at the program, not to criticize it, not to do that, but to say, here's some things that we see that might help improve your program. I think that then it got translated into the whole county.
Thank you for our principal when I organized that.
All right, Steve. I know Steve.
You remember them all coming.
She do, and I assure you that Mrs. Taggant came back and shared with the staff on a regular basis and brought me into the loop. She did a great job.
But she did. Do you like to say anything about your?
Well, don't have much that I can't talk very well at all, went to my grandson's ballgame Friday and had my name on talks. But I just appreciate Keith, I know Keith well and appreciate the opportunity that you all allowed me to have to be a leader to other teachers and I still feel like I'm a leader in my school and I just enjoy that role very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Jonathan, Jonathan, I ask you, was our science person. By the way, we had one math, one science person in every county, all 17 counties. So Jonathan did a lot of stuff. Jonathan kind of became our poster boy since. Because we, after six years of, seven years, six years of program, going into the seventh, we actually held a forum in Washington DC in the Rayburn Building and presented to congressional people there about this whole thing, not just here in Lincoln County, but we had there like 30 of these projects around the country. And so we had people talking about just selected ones of those. And Jonathan gave an outstanding presentation and I think you spent about two hours with Senator Rockefeller.
Talking about Lincoln County.
Yes, and so Jonathan, I'm very impressed with the, I'll tell you, the facilities, the lab facilities in this high school are as good as any place I ever went to college and most any college I've ever been into, to be quite honest about it. It's amazing and I know Jonathan's played a lot of roles in working with improvement of the science program in Lincoln County. And so I'm very proud of him. I know that you are too, as Darlene as well, so.
Well, thank you, sir. Before I talk about systemic initiative, it's rare what's happened in this room right now. Two of my heroes are here, okay? Dr. Smith for his passion. I didn't know this guy, the first time I met him, walked into a conference and he comes up and says, "Can I help you? My name's Keith." And for a long time, I just knew him as Keith. And later on, I learned about all his accolades and his skills. And as our relationship developed, I learned about his passion. And people who know Dr. Smith talks about his passion. And the other is, and this is, this is a testament to the hero worship I give, you know how you have to put in those security questions when you open up accounts to whatever? When it says, "Who was your best teacher?" I write in Wilkerson. So having said that, the systemic initiative, it was a wonderful experience for Darlene and myself and, 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 let me get this straight, 10 counties in southwestern, eight counties and 10 here.
Southwest.
Okay, I got it backwards. And to share with what was going on with the other counties and the other people and to have that network, it was invaluable. And those relationships still exist. But we brought back and I thought, well, what am I going to say? Because there's tons of stuff. But at the end of the day, Darlene and I tried to bring it back. We've had countless workshops in science.
Having an opportunity to do three book studies.
Book studies, workshops, demos, it's, it just, the list goes on and on. And it was wonderful because what was happening with our initiative was always overcut an edge. And as we progressed to our, to our learning focus, it just blended so well, all the things with what really needs to take place for learning, the Marzano work, what has to happen in a classroom. It was, it was a wonderful experience and we continue to try to share what we've learned with others. It has to be sustainable and we try to make that happen. And I appreciate the colleagues before you and some of you still here giving Darlene and myself that opportunity. It was wonderful. Thank you.
These individuals helped us a lot along the way. I appreciate your time. I know you've got a lot to do, but these are great people and I think we really had a handle on a really good program, which we could expand and go further than.
Director's sitting, ma'am. Director's sitting. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for all the things we did.
Mr. Vanny Hough. Well, President Curry and Mrs. Lucas and members of the board, we are very grateful to be able to come and make a presentation this evening on a life for a lifelong good person, lifelong friend. And several of our classmates are with me and I'm not sure if a copy of the petition that we sent down got in your folders or not, but again, we will be presenting you with petitions, 32 of them signed by the class of 19 and 60 from Duval High School. And what we're looking forward to is for you to award Joanne Bowman Loftus with an honorary diploma from Duval High School. And we submit the following to justify this petition. Mrs. Bowman attended schools in Lincoln County from the first grade to and including completion of her junior year at Duval High School. After her year, junior year at Duval, although maintaining excellent grades, consistently making the honor roll, she dropped out of school of her own choosing, a decision, of course, that she regrets to date. But in 1986, she completed all the requirements and was awarded a GED from the Lincoln County Vocational School here at Hamlin. She recently celebrated 52 years of marriage to her high school sweetheart, classmate, Mr. Dean Loftus. They are the parents of two sons, both graduates of Duval. They are the proud grandparents of three children, all having graduated from Duval. And Mrs. Loftus would be here this evening, but one of the grandsons, who is a defender of our country, spent a tour of duty in Afghanistan, returned home recently and had a very serious health problem and just, I think, got out of ICU. So that was more important than her being here, of course. She has six great-grandchildren and I'm not so sure that they all won't be able to graduate from Duval, but hopefully Lincoln County School. Joanne has remained faithful. Here's what causes us to be so close to her. She's remained faithful throughout these 50-plus years and continues to stay in touch with her classmates. All of the reunions from 19 and 60, Joanne has played a lead role in organizing the events to include the burdensome task of contacting. If you've ever arranged a reunion, you might know what she was up against. ever arranged a reunion, you might know what she was up against. And this stands out. Throughout the years, she's taken it upon herself to always ensure that flowers have been purchased and displayed during the wake and funeral services of all of those classmates that have been deceased. Not only that, the most that I've ever been to, she's also there as well. Joanne has been a lifelong resident of Lincoln County. She and her husband presently reside at Alcoa. They're considered outstanding neighbors and friends. Both are active in the Sycamore Grove Missionary Baptist Church. And there she is again. When the need arises for benevolent projects, those kind of things, you'll always find her there leading in that. 32 of our classmates have signed this petition. We send those as far as California, far south as Florida. And I pray that you will honor this. And I want to say this to you. In all the years that I've worked, after graduating in 1960, I've been involved in some very worthwhile and some rather large projects to include renaming Jaeger Airport in honor of our dear hero Chuck Jaeger. But there is not very many things that mean as much to me as does this and the classmates. Great notes coming back. Hope this happens. Let me know. That's worth it. So I come begging you to award her, as simple as it might seem, an honorary diploma, so that she can officially be a part of the class of 1960. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
I have no question. I'd like to skip it to the superintendent for the next agenda, so we can vote on it. I'm certainly encouraged the board to go along with it, because I think that's right.
Thanks.
I have a question. Do you envision this being a formal certificate, or is this just a resolution? What do you really sign?
I really would like to see a certificate, and I'd like to see it either presented by a board member, superintendent, with some of her classmates. You'll not believe the response when I ask her if it would be okay to do this for her. To us, it seems like kind of a simple thing. She is terribly excited that she will be officially, after 52 years, will be an official graduate of Duval High School.
Well, I see it, realizing that Duval High School doesn't exist, and there aren't diplomas that we would be issuing to other students.
There are diplomas that can be pulled off of a computer, that I'm sure that somebody on staff would be able to do that, or somehow. I'd like to come up with this petition.
That's why I wanted to clarify what it is.
We'll even get the frame and pay for it and make sure that it's done, you know, nice.
I think it should be in one of our, the original ones that we give out, our diplomas, rather than him putting it in a frame.
I remember what I think was neat bit in a Duval.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'm just trying to clarify what it is.
It's possible, yes.
Maybe Mr. Wilkerson has one stuck under his desk.
It's possible we might be able to find them. I don't know. I can't, can't really say right now.
We're going to leave that up to you.
Put him on the spot.
Yeah, that's right.
I bet there's one laying around over there somewhere.
I just wanted to clarify what they were seeking.
With this being on there, Mr. Curry, I mean, he's on here already to present this. I don't know why we couldn't just go ahead and vote on it now.
Well, what my thinking was, we'd bring the board meeting and present it at a board meeting to the big suite.
If we could get that.
It's not an action item, though. I think it's only for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just want to be legal.
I mean, we set it for any board meeting next, first week.
I've got the number.
Okay.
I have to see when she can come also.
Yeah. She would have been here tonight, because she had planned on coming. And then when I talked to her two days ago, she told me the series just got choked and ended up rupturing his esophagus, and it just, you know, took his life. And we also, I'd like to thank some of the classmates, this is Lester Cyrilz and his wife, and this is Nawasa Honi, Tador, Traitor, I don't know how you pronounce it. Traitor. Nawasa was our class president. And this is my best friend, and the reason I can't stay in touch with him. If it wasn't for him, I'd have been last in my class. And that's of course a problem. And he can take, he takes a good job.
And with his help, you were next to last.
That's what I said. And by the way, I played softball against Fred when I was 16, and Fred was 70 at the time. We did, we played softball against each other, Fred.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I remember, yeah.
Thank you. You're very kind.
Thank you.
We'll wait to hear from you.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Come on.
My petition.
I'll give you one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Oh, yeah. Did you want us to not get a second page from what Mr. Keith gave out there? Two sheets. Did I get two sheets?
I got one.
Finally, you had the first.
Okay, Mr. King.
Congratulations.
I'm not real sure what it is that we are presenting tonight, other than the fact that, to just reiterate the need for the portables at West Hamlin. In the, over the past couple of months, I've had the opportunity to work with the CEFP folks, and I've looked at some of the data in the CEFP manual, and some things that have come to, come to my attention is that the maximum capacity for West Hamlin is 515 students. Our current enrollment today is 523. So we're, we're operating in over 100% capacity. And with, with projections of next year, we're probably going to exceed 530 with, with increased pre-K numbers. And we, we must add another fifth, first grade class because of the, the numbers in the, at the younger level is where the, where the increase is, is really hitting us. Our fifth grade that will, will go on to Guyan Valley this year is, is 52. We have 64 fourth graders who'll be rising fifth graders next year. So that the numbers are increasing. So we, we need the space. Currently, I just mentioned, we need to add a first grade class. There's not a room available at West Hamlin. There's not a room available. Right now, we have two Title I teachers sharing a room. So for them to do, for them to service students in a pull-out capacity, we have to be very creative in our scheduling. And we, we really need to have that, those rooms available. So that would be a need for another room. So that's two. We have two interventionists working with our kindergarten, first and second grade classes, and that intervention is taking place in a hallway. That's the best we have right now. And we're, we're making a buy. But we, I believe we owe it to our children to give them the best that we can. And these interventionists are working with students who are identified based on their DIBELS and, and other assessments, SMI, TMI, or T, SRI, Scholastic Reading and Scholastic Math Inventories, that they are identified and needing some extra assistance. So to have them in the hallways, that's, again, that's the best we can do. But eventually, those, those children could be labeled, and we, I really don't think that we want that kind of criticism happening to us. And then, and finally, when a specialist, orthopedic or speech pathologist not on staff comes and needs to test, the only space we have available right now is in the library. So we have to close the library down while they're doing that testing, that diagnostic testing. So our students lose access to the library. So if we had two portables, those four rooms, we're still, it's going to, we're going to max it right back out. But we feel like that that's, that's just a necessity right now. That's all I can say. As Forrest Gump said, that's all I've got to say about that.
Let you know, we'll talk about location a little bit. If you're familiar with West Hamlin, we've located the modulars in the back of the school, so they'll be kind of hidden. If you remember, recall, there was a metal building that we've already had tore down. We sold it in a public auction. We took bids on moving the modular at Aitkenville several months ago. Purchase order's already been done for that. It's roughly $7,000 to move it. The one in Putnam County is at Buffalo High School. It's roughly going to be $10,000 to move it. The additional cost is due to, we're going to have to take the decks, pay, pay the company moving it to take the decks off, haul them away. They've got to weld some hitches on those modulars. And, and there's some extra mileage for that, for that one. So that's the reason for the additional cost. The modular at Aitkenville, currently the utilities have all been disconnected. The decks have been removed by my people, and it's ready to, it's ready to go. We've looked at both modulars. They're going to match up perfectly. They'll be situated similar to the modulars at Midway, where there's a ramp that goes between the two modulars. So one ramp will serve the students going into the modulars. There's two classrooms in each modular that share a bathroom. And they, the modulars look like they were made from the same company. That's how closely they are. And then I was going to have a paint crew paint them the same color, maybe some school colors, green or something. Yeah, that's, I got a guess on that. So that's, sounds good. The modular at Buffalo will be available June 8. And the principal has assured me that he'll have everything out of it. And the only thing we'll have to wait on is for the power company to come and take the electric off. And their Board of Education is going to unhook the utilities. They just didn't want those decks. I don't blame them. So we're going to get rid of them. If they're giving us a module, we can surely take the, the decks off and get rid of them. So that's all I have.
Well, they should be up and running plenty of time.
Oh, yes. They'll be ready to go when school starts.
And if I could add to that now, with that, so that you know in case you get calls and people asking you who's going where and what's going on, my, my plan is for the fifth grade, which is three classes and a specialist, to be, to be moved out to those modulars. And that will afford me the opportunity to get some of the, the grade levels back together as teams. Currently, we have five kindergarten classrooms, and one is on the far end of the building away. But by, by having these three rooms open within the building, it will afford me, I've already talked with third grade teachers, they're willing to relocate so we can have third and fourth together on one wing. We can get first and second closer together and get our, our fifth kindergarten class down where she needs to be, so that we have that collaborative team in, in proximity. Because it is, when you, when you're out there on the one end of the building, everybody else is on the other end of the building, kind of feel like you're on an island. So we have a plan in place. So that's, that is the plan right now, is for the fifth grade to move out. I don't want, I don't want the little ones having to come in in the weather. The bigger ones can handle that just a little bit better.
Doesn't this help alleviate some of the issues we have, the restroom?
It will indeed. It will indeed.
What did you say on the restroom? Is there one restroom? Is that what Dan said?
There's one restroom for each modular. The two classrooms share a restroom.
So there would be two restrooms.
Yes, two additional restrooms.
When will you be, when do you anticipate moving the one at Aitkenville?
We could, we could move it as early as next week. I may wait till the kids are gone, which is only two weeks. I kind of intended on doing that, but...
You'll actually need them both are together anyway before you start.
I'd like to request that you would, because we have, next week will be our West test makeup. And, and as that comes to a close, we have a lot of celebrations scheduled at West Hamlin. So to have things moving in and around the parking lot with, with projected inflatables and that kind of thing, I think we just may want to hold off. Not that, not that I don't want them in there, because we got a lot of things to do. But I'd like to, for our babies to be able to celebrate a little with some safety.
Is the electricity removed from the one at Aitkenville already?
From the meter, yes. Whether the power, I contacted the power company. Whether they've taken it off the pole yet or not, I'm not sure. But it's not going to matter. The electric is unhooked from the modular.
Yeah, that's, if you've got a disconnect up there, you don't have to worry about that part.
The only reason it would matter is the pole's real close to the modular. And until the power company just makes their disconnect, if we need to cut that power pole down in order to get them out, that would be the only reason that we'd need that done prior to doing it. I'm not sure if that's the case at all.
But you could check on that next week?
Yes. Yeah. I figured I had two weeks to play with here.
Anything else? I'd like to, again, invite you anytime, board members, come over and see West Hamlin. Just come over and walk through. We just, we just finished a school of excellence visit. And I want to thank you for supporting us in that endeavor. And I'm being as patient as I possibly can with the State Department, and they're letting us know one way or the other. But stop by and see us. We'd love to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Before we go on, can I ask Dana a question that's not related to that? Are we going to have air conditioning at Guyan Valley before graduation, before their graduation?
The interior units are malleled. The exterior units are not malleled yet. We've been waiting on some dry weather, because we're going to have to bring a crane with a lift to lift those up on the roof. And it's just been too wet to do that. So hopefully we'll get some dry weather. And it's going to be tight. It's going to be tight.
But you'll try really, really hard.
I'm going to try harder now.
Okay.
When is their graduation?
You know, I'm not sure. But I figure it'd be week after next, wouldn't you?
I guess I forget about middle school having graduations.
Yeah, they do, and it's so hot.
I really hadn't thought of that. And I'm going to try harder now.
Okay.
I know fifth grade is scheduled at Guyan Valley on May 29.
Okay, funding requests. Can I come down after?
Good afternoon. My name's Kayla McKinnon. I'm a student of Lincoln County High School. I'm also a senior. As you know, four kids from Lincoln County High School brought home a gold medal from Skills USA. We are here today to request aid, money, so we can make the trip. These, including myself, Molly Hoak, Rachel Elkins, and Wesley Atkins, they all placed first in the states. And we have an opportunity to go to national June 22 to 25. As you can see on your paper, we have a, a list of expenses with hotel and getting in. And also, if you turn on the back, you'll see we'll go out to eat and throughout the day. And you can see how much that's going to cost. I really hope you guys will help fund us, because we're representing Lincoln County High School and West Virginia State. If there's any questions... If there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Do you have any funds already gathered up?
We do have some fund in our Skills USA account, but not enough to cover the cost.
So this is in addition to what you have?
No, we have paid some of the expenses already. Uh, we had to put a down payment with the state. They actually provide transportation and we have to, had to put a down payment. We had to put down half of, like, the hotel and conference registration expenses. So where it said a total of $2,465, we have been able to pay half of that. And then, uh, we still have, uh, like, the expense of meals for the students also.
So what are you asking for?
Well, I asked, I, I, whatever you, you know, I, I just, whatever you all, it's fair, we'll have to, you know, whatever you all are willing to let us have, to help us with this trip, if not, whatever will have to be.
On, on the, very back, you'll see the total cost.
The total cost is, and we have paid, uh, like I said, 12,000, like 12,030 dollars, 35 dollars. Whatever we don't get from Lincoln County Board, we will have to make up those funds in some fundraisers or other, um...
I think we're still a little unclear how much you need to...
How much I really need?
How much you need to do all this?
Two thousand, thirty dollars.
Two thousand dollars would be wonderful. I'm sorry, I hate to ask for money. I'm not used to...
Did you say you paid 12,000?
1,200.
Oh, 1,200, I'm sorry. We paid 1,200 and, yes. So the 2,000 would actually pretty well cover.
2,000 is what you're asking?
Yes. 2,000 is what I asked for, okay. I'm not good at this.
Have you talked to the Mr. Sax at school about it? Any help?
Well, actually, Mr. Sax helped with our trip to state. We actually took more students to state competition this year than we ever have. And the bus of alone were like, uh, the bus alone was almost $2,500. So we have kinda exhausted our, uh, expenses or our money that he's willing to give at the high school level.
And one more thing to persuade you, this is the largest group that's actually brought home gold medals from state. And this is the largest group going to nationals, representing Lincoln County High School.
So it's, it's four students and three instructors, is that correct?
Can I ask a related but unrelated question?
Sure.
In your organ, this organization, this group here, do they have an allocation of money given to you all each year? Or do you use?
From the state?
No, from anywhere.
That we pay, okay. In, in the past, actually, the state, okay, Skills USA is the career tech ed organization for, you know, technical students. And we have to pay to join the state level and the national level, which we did and Mr. Sax helped with that. And a lot of times we use funds from our program to help pay our costs to join. But they do not give us any money back.
Does anybody give you, your heart would give it.
No, 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 no.
We fundraise for everything. We're the ones at our state level. We've actually received donations from Chesapeake. Um, we've also received some funds for our state level from the VFW, um, from MAPPA, and a few other small personal donations. But we do not receive anything from the state level or the national level Skills USA for any of our money.
Okay, so you don't get anything from the national school. Do you get anything from the school level?
No.
Mr. Sax's fund this and then you go ahead.
Not, not a lot of it, other than when we ask and say, because like I said, when we went to state, it was...
Oh, I realize you gave him, I'm just trying to see if...
So there's not any money that he can, and in the past, last year, the state actually gave money to the students for meals. And this year, the buses had gotten, gotten so expensive, there was no, I contacted him, I said, are you gonna give us money this year for student meals? And he said, there's not any left, that they have used all their, their funding just to pay for transportation. Because they will take three charter buses from the state of West Virginia going to Kansas City.
Why not, man? Like, question.
Well, no, no, I understand. I, I guess that, I'm just, this is terrible, but I, I, I'm just not used to asking for money. And we just kinda came up a little short. And I know that in the past, people have come to the board and asked for their assistance. And as Caleb mentioned, you know, this, we have four kids going this year. And that's the most that Lincoln County High School has ever, um, sent to nationals from the state level competition.
And I think we all appreciate that and their...
I understand. I'm not, I know you're not trying to give me our money. I'm not trying to give you our money either, but I'm...
No, that's the reason I said it's relating, but unrelated, because what you, what you went on further to say, we get a lot of requests for a lot of things and they just seem to be mounting. And I think at some point, we have to kinda get a handle on, uh, you know, what we're gonna do. And that's why I wanted to, I was just trying to see if you, if your group got a, an annual amount from, allocation from anyone? Or you just kinda took it as you made it as you needed it?
We take it as, as we, as we, like, solicit sort, well, solicit is kind of a funny word. As we ask for donations and then, you know, any of our programs that have fundraisers, we put into a Skills USA, uh, like, account. We have an account where we have fundraisers. And we usually, like, the students, some counties actually have their students pay the dues, like, the state and national dues themselves. And sometimes that's a deterrent for our kids to join because, you know, they don't have the, the money to join. So we kinda have tried to pay that. So when we kinda take that on, then that kinda depletes other funds that we would give for travel.
Understand that entirely. Once again, I think this is just, once again, something not directed...
Well, I, I will be quite honest. I will be quite honest. The reason we are here is sort of because you have somewhat, that precedent that had given money to other people. But I'll, I'll be honest. And that's why, when we talked about, you know, coming, being a little short, we're like, well, you know, we could present it to the board and see if they have some funds available.
I don't blame you.
And like I said, I, like I said, that's kinda been in response to your being able to help other programs in the county.
When, when do you need this?
Well, we're traveling, uh, I'm not sure that remainder has to be, Jerry, like I said, sent in part of it. Uh, we're leaving June the 22nd.
Have to be in by June the 15th, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll certainly see if we can help you a little.
Okay, we appreciate it.
We'll let you know here.
Okay.
May I ask one more question of a student here? Your favorite?
Yes, sir.
You will be doing job skills demo aid. What is that? Could you explain to me what you're gonna be doing there?
It's, I have, uh, seven minutes to present, uh, a model which I created with Jerry Kermans, which is a disc brake, a front disc brake, uh, model. And I take it apart and I do a thorough inspection with it. And then I put it back together and I explain the components of the braking system to the judges.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a comment. I think, you know, our high school is, is, this year seems to be more, flourishing more in different areas. And I'm, I'm really proud of that.
We have good instructors.
Yes. I, I, I guess I'm too free with money, but I say, God, you know, let them go. Sorry, guys.
We all, we also, we, we understand money's tight everywhere, but, and I'm not sure in our county how to go about making, you know, to try to make funds. I do know that Caleb's good at changing oil and taking care of all that kind of stuff. And that feeds money into their program, which they in turn help us. But see, like, with health occupations, there's not a whole lot of services that we can do in order to get reimbursed, like computer repair or the graphic design or, you know, automatic, auto mechanics.
I, I'm really proud of them and I like to see the kids rewarded.
It's been a good year for them.
I, I think it's, I think it's a worthy endeavor and, and I'm so proud of our kids too. I think, I think it's wonderful to go to the state and win and to be represented nationally. The only thing I, the only reservation I have, not particularly with this group, is with all groups. Because I don't know how to determine what's worthy to give money to. I mean, we have 20 more groups that come and says, we need money. How can we say no to any of them?
Bertie.
And have any money left? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm concerned. I want them all to go. I want, I have no reservations about anybody going anywhere if they, you know, for academically or even sports wise. But I, I think sometimes we're gonna have to determine, or you all will, that, you know, how to go about this with a fair process for all the children. Because I think all of them deserve all the money we can give you. The question is, how much money can we give you, you know?
They can get a little lighter than Bertie will have. I think we've discussed this before. She's going to, she's going to present, you know, um, a solution, we think, if we have.
It's just hard for us to say no. Any chew on, I think, it's not in us.
So it has to be us. So we're gonna try to give you all some.
We're gonna take it away from you guys.
That's what we wanted to hear.
It's hard for us.
So this is all one, this is all one issue, right? Just the fact that you all don't have...
It brings up a, a process, yes.
Yes, a process. Now that you've got a new process in place.
But I do wanna say that we're so very proud. And you said you had good instructors, but they have good students, so...
They're casting a good place.
...to the occasion, you know, so we're very proud.
Good luck to you all.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here.
Good luck to you, sir.
Good luck. Be sure you let them know where you're from. Thank, thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to finances.
I'm gonna head to speech and debate.
Okay.
Okay. Don't forget the play. Tuesday, the 22nd of May, the evening.
We have a board meeting.
We have to come through the, uh, day.
Actually, it's gonna be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Morning, afternoon, Monday. Morning, afternoon, evening, Tuesday, and morning and afternoon, Wednesday.
Okay, so we can catch one of them.
Yes, and we've got some of the... It is Seussical.
Yeah, what's Seussical?
And we've got some of the, it's kinda interesting because we've got some of the little kids.
I'll be one of them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you guys should have a copy of the invoices that are getting ready to be paid in the amount of $1,227,065.21. And I have copies of the invoices. And if you have questions, we'll address those later on. The other thing we need to do tonight is go ahead and put our bu, public budget on public review. And I have a copy for you guys.
Does that have to be on there?
No, no, it's just, it's just, I, I was thought, you know, I'll hand you guys a copy.
Well, you're giving this out. Let me ask you a question if you don't care. This national flood insurance program, could you just sort of apprise us of what that is?
Uh, well, actually, it's paid to Lincoln, uh, well, it's kind of through Lincoln Agency.
Oh, you have one.
Yes, it is. I have. Okay, that's okay, because I'm not gonna talk about it. I'm just giving it to you guys. National flood insurance is insurance for our school buildings, G-Val.
Okay, so it's actually insurance for, for floods, okay.
Yeah, and actually, it's the one that paid off on, I think, much way back when Crystal Light destroyed. And so here's another thing, uh, just a little worksheet that I've done on, uh, the top part is certified lists, comparison, a few years. And then the bottom part is budgeting comparison. And just let you guys kind of work over that. And bring these back for the, May the 25th, because that's when we're gonna have our actual budget hearing. May the 25th is when we'll do, we'll actually approve the budget. So it's officially on public review. And we'll have our budget hearing on the 25th. Now, let me talk about student activities for a minute. I, I really don't like seeing you guys put in kind of an uncomfortable position like this. And then we kinda open up the floodgates to everybody wants money. Uh, and that's kind of the reason we did student activities way back when, was to help pay for some of these trips. So what we're gonna do next year is we're gonna put some more money into the student activities fund, which we're putting 20 more thousand dollars. And so what we're gonna have to do is talk to the principals, now, here's your money. You know, you know these trips are gonna happen every year, so you need to set aside, you know, we've got skills, you know, there's the national competition, and the state competition, that speech and debate. So everybody needs to set aside and plan for these trips so that they're not coming to the board. Because I just don't, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable putting you guys in this situation, you know? So it needs to be handled at the school level. And there's Mr. King. I mean, you probably have enough money, Mr. King, for your activities.
It's fair.
I don't, yeah. And it's just a matter of taking the money that you're allocated and planning what you're gonna do with it. You know, maybe you have to give up a Kings Island trip for an educational national competition. But they're the ones that needs to be making those decisions. You know, I don't like it, I don't like it coming to you guys.
From the principal, with no more, what?
The principal, yes.
It's hard to say no.
Any other, it's all, it's...
Well, that's what I was thinking.
We can do it. We have it.
Oh, yeah.
But that's what I was thinking.
Of who I do now.
If the allocations needed to be increased for these things, and that's what you're doing.
So we did, we bumped up $20,000, because like I said, I just don't like, I don't like this happening to you guys, you know? So we're gonna push it back to the schools and the, and the school principals have to make those decisions and they have to do the pre-planning. Like I said, you know, maybe it's Kings Island trip, maybe it's a trip for instructional purposes for the kids. Or, you know, maybe the band needs to go to Florida, you know, ROTC on trip. So they need to be planning for those things and not coming here.
And doing fundraisers beginning in September.
Yes, yes, yes.
Like you said, Fred, they can better determine what's, what they consider more worthy, you know? I mean, we just, we like all of it, so...
You say $20,000, is that in Toto Holland?
No, they have, uh, 100,000.
Additional?
No, I did, I did additional 20,000, so that puts $100,000. It's allocated, um, let me see. Let me see how it was. I can't remember. I have it in my office.
Well, but I'm saying, are you planning on giving that, uh, the high school may receive more than...
The high school will, will receive more.
Per student, they said, per student?
Yeah, yeah, per student. But the high school has a heavier weight than the, um, elementaries.
Right.
Actually, it's junior high and high school has a heavier weight than elementary.
The total is 20.
The, so what's the total now for all schools?
$80,000 for all schools.
Plus 20.
And, yeah, I'm gonna bump it up 20, so it'll be $100,000 next year. So like I say, if they pre-plan, there should be money.
Okay, good.
Well, something Bertie mentioned here, when I asked about the flood insurance, you said you think that's paid through Lincoln Agency?
Well, you know, actually, Lincoln Agency, um, is who we go through, but the check's issued to National Flood Insurance. So I don't know how you, what's that called?
Should I recuse myself from this?
I don't see a problem with it, but it's your decision to make. Okay, at this time, I'll ask for a vote on all the items except, uh, check number 481. Want that back on?
41381.
41381. All but that? All but that one. I'll make a motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll accept that.
Yeah, I'll accept that. Okay, now we're voting on 4381, 41381. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that? I'll motion. Free select, second, or person. How do you vote? Yes, oh, yes. Okay. Okay, comments are in charge. What first name was that? I don't have it. I forgot. First name. Do I have a motion on first name?
I do.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, first name.
Okay, me. I think you all have probably the last revised personnel schedule. The first page, section A, is the renewal of professional personnel pen and renewal of the first class permit. That's section A. Section B, employment of substitute service personnel. Section C, employment of professional personnel. Section D, retirement and/or a resignation. Section E, leave of absence.
Section E, leave of absence. Then we go to the second page. All of these following people are for summer positions only. I would like, section F, I would like for you to look at F-two, change that name from Bill McLeod to Brittany Porter. And then all the way on the last page, down to F-eighty-nine, you will change Brittany Porter to Bill McLeod. Just got those reversed. You will notice within each of these areas, the dates effective, the beginning and ending. And these are only for summer positions. These are not permanent positions. And then there is one abolish, the summer position, was grounds crew, we inadvertently posted when we already had the.
On F-eighty-one and F-eighty-two, I know you and I spoke briefly about this previous, Trish, I'd ask you a question. Those are new jobs?
Mm-hmm, for summertime home.
Or some, do we approve these jobs? I mean, do we approve the, the description of the job? Did we ever create the job? That's my question.
As a matter of fact, we didn't.
I just thought about that.
Me, too. Now that you just asked that, these are.
Would we have time to?
Yeah, June the fourth.
Go back and create them?
Yes.
And then hire them?
We, we have job descriptions. These are two jobs that are in the code. I mean, you know, they're not newly.
But they're not in air.
They're, they're not, we don't have these people.
But you'd have to have two again, though.
Yes, we would have to have you to approve the job. Then we would have, you would have to vote on that, and then we would have to post, and then you would have to wait the five days, and then have board meeting hired them.
Yes, so you could just change the dates they work. I, I mean, if we, if they just do want to.
This is a painter, it doesn't really matter where.
These two, F-eighty-one and F-eighty-two.
Okay, okay.
F-eighty-one, they do, yeah, those two.
No, we can't mention, we can't make details.
Well, I'm going to strike those two, then.
But I mean, later, after all, you go through the procedure, you can just change the dates to, to work those, these certain number of days. It doesn't have to be those particular days, does it?
That would depend on Mr. Coming. We would, we're going to have a posting go out Thursday, and it will be down five days, and then we will have. We don't need posting.
You have to create the job, you're, I'm jumping in again.
On the next board meeting, on the twenty-second.
We can create.
We could create, and you all could approve the creation. And then we can post, and when's our next board meeting?
Sixty-one.
That one, twenty-second.
We created on the twenty-second, didn't we?
Yeah, we created on the twenty-second.
And then we could post on the twenty-third. When's our next board meeting after that, Brandon?
Well, we meet the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
There will be a bit of time.
With a bit of time.
Well, June, maybe June, I have to have a special meeting. It's fifth, June the fifth is next.
So then that would just, that, the only one it would really affect is that first one, June, that's June fourth, July thirtieth.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So we could strike one, and then it'd be hard for one date.
Yes, so we will remove F-eighty-one and F-eighty-two upon approval of job description for those two positions.
And, and I had asked you before, and this is mainly inventory?
Definitely, and I'll have those.
The warehouse clerk?
Yes, and you all want to see the job descriptions for these. So that will help light up everything that they're going to be doing.
Anything else on personnel? Okay, how do you vote on personnel, if those two items are removed?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah. Comments in concern, Lincoln County High School sign.
I would like for us to go with the second.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Seriously, I need to ask you a question.
I'll motion.
I'll say it.
Do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Do you have anything?
After all that time?
Think it worth it?
One page news.
Trish, on my comments and concern, do you have anything to say at this point?
I do. On the bullet of further information regarding a bus driver's suspension, I would like to ask for correction to the April seventeen minutes regarding Sherri Smith. There was a statement on the April seventeenth referring to state work policy forty-three thirty-six, use of cellular phones or other portable electronic devices while driving a bus. And we had documentation from the cell phone carrier at that time, there, on that date, the time of the accident, there was no cell phone usage. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Want to remove that from the, from the seventeen minutes?
Yes, I would, please.
Third on the next agenda? Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, before I ask for a motion adjourned, are we going to meet at six o'clock, or are you going to come a little early? Because that, and that one is going to evaluate for Trish.
Will I the twenty-second?
Yes. Yes.
Two o'clock, this is twenty-fifth. The two o'clock is the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So we, CFP will be here at four, they may not finish before.
No, no, not on the twenty-second.
Yes.
See, we meet the twenty-second for Trish's evaluation.
But the CFP.
The CFP's coming after that, though, aren't they?
Yes.
They're going to be.
On the twenty-second?
Yes.
No, aren't? Yeah, that one's going to meet prior to the board meeting. Hopefully come to, to the board with a prioritized list.
They're going to meet at four, is that what you said?
Oh, they're going to be.
Well, yeah, we don't go that, so we can meet, right, we can meet, you know, anytime, but we've got to go through and go through the evaluation.
Now, if they meet at four, they're going to last a couple hours.
At least, yeah.
We're going to have a regular meeting after four.
Mm-hmm.
At six. They said, they said for six o'clock, the regular meeting.
Well, what I'm saying is, we can come at the board at five o'clock, board, our evaluation that we did of Trish, and be ready for the board meeting at six o'clock.
Just have them to meet in another room.
Right. Because I don't think it's going to take that long. That's why I'm trying to offer big improvement.
I'm ready by all.
Where's that big boat?
You all are ahead of that, just a little.
How long?
What do you, do you want to make the, the bus get together at four o'clock for board session?
What time for you?
Four, or four o'clock.
You think it'll take us two hours?
No, well, well, you want to make it five o'clock?
If we, if we're going to meet at six, I mean, I think an hour would be plenty of that.
See, now, that's just when we meet, and then the second phase at six would then, when we ask Trish to come in.
Trish is going to.
That's right, yeah, okay. Five o'clock for us, and six.
Five o'clock?
Okay, no, that's an open session.
No, that, no, that'd be closed, of course, it would be a long evaluation.
So close.
More or less, that'd be a work session, right.
Right. Then it'll continue to be in, in the executive session when Trish arrives, kind of invite.
And then can all be closed session.
The only time it'll be open is after we come up with a statement.
Statement, will the statement be during, I won't be here, so I have to send someone, so I want to be sure. The statement will be during the regular session, I guess?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we, so the media doesn't need to be here until?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
And that'll be regular session, statement, plus CFP briefing, or whatever, perfect. Clear as mud.
Okay, so we'll be here at five o'clock for the board session. Okay, I'll ask for a motion on second to adjourn, until late at twenty-second. After our work session, regular meeting at six o'clock.
We'll meet at five.
But only if we need a.
Whatever you say, I don't care. I moved.
You, you'll be here at five o'clock.
I just covered the five, I.
How do you vote?
Yes.